Everybody ready?
Yep.
I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, January 25, 2022. First, I apologize to those of you who may be watching. We had a work session on indoor air quality that was really interesting and, I think, full of really good information, but it ran a little longer than we thought it would. So I do apologize for starting a little bit late. Laura, would you please call the roll?
Garcia.
Here.
Gephardt.
Here.
Niznik.
Here.
Raj Paul.
Here.
Sargent.
Here.
Sweeney Moran.
Here.
Zess.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
I'd like to remind everybody that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful civically engaged lives. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for joining us electronically on BV22. We're glad to have you observe and participate in our meetings. At this time, I would like to see if there's someone who would like to make a motion to approve our agenda for this evening. Stacy, seconded by Kitty. Laura, can you call the roll on the motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Garcia.
Yes.
Gephardt.
Yes.
Niznik.
Yes.
Raj Paul.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Sweeney Moran.
Yes.
Zess.
Yes.
Motion passes.
We'll begin, as always, with the superintendent's report. Dr. Anderson, good evening.
Thank you, Board President Gephardt, members of the board. Several updates this evening. I'd like to start by thanking the Boulder Rotary Club. They gave me an opportunity to present to members, both online and in person, last Friday. Was able to give the club, those were able to attend, just updates on our Marshall Fire response, pandemic, and some of the great work that's happening in the school district. So I wanted to start by thanking Boulder Rotary. As you'll see on the slides, we will be highlighting some wonderful drawings from Lewisville Elementary School. You know, we continue to really, just as a district and community, be in awe of the work of our employees and all they did to help us reopen schools. The kids at Lewisville Elementary wanted to express their gratitude, and they sent in these drawings, which shows us pumping clean air into buildings. I think that Dr. Shaughnessy and Professor Edwards would be proud, and just how that makes them happy. So again, for our community, if you go to www.bvsd.org/heroes, you can just see some of the amazing work that our team did. Board members, continue to have our district's trauma team actively engaged, working to support our students and community. Again, a special thanks goes out to our counselors, psychologists, and mental health advocates, all of which have trauma-specific counseling training, and they've been supporting our kids. And they've been, and I think as some of the artwork shows to some of their messages of what they're sharing, you know, it's, right now, it's okay not to be okay. And I think that we all know and understand that as members of this community. Also, just, you know, just this idea of all hands on deck, I think that you'll have some examples here of folks that are employees of the district and that are filling in in other roles as assigned to help keep our schools open. We know that there's been significant staffing shortages. We've been emptying out the education center for the past couple of weeks, in addition to doing, I think, just a fantastic job of recruiting, hiring, onboarding substitute teachers. Last Friday, we were around 85% coverage in our class, in our schools. I will tell you that the average around the country is about 40 to 50% from the folks that I've spoken with, so we're doing, we're just doing double that. Just really want to thank our community for folks that have been raising their hand and helping us out, and just all of our employees that have taken on, you know, in job descriptions, it's always like the last bullet, other duties as assigned, and folks have been taking on other duties as assigned in really heroic ways. So thank you all so much. And we, I also to thank our community. We've seen some just significant efforts from some of our parent organizations. I will say that several of us, I know Kathy and Lisa, when we were out on that first day and we came back on Wednesday, we saw a really great example, Coal Creek Elementary, where parents had actually organized bringing in storage pods to begin to start to collect resources, clothing, whatever our families might need, and just really, really just want to thank those parents at Coal Creek and the parents throughout the district for all they've been doing to support our communities during this time of need. Couple other thank yous. I'm not sure how many of you have seen this. This is pretty spectacular. Impact on education has really helped us throughout this crisis. I know, Board members, you know that. I hope our community knows that as well. Impact on education is our foundation for BVSD. They were able to get in touch with Crocs, who's providing every student in BVSD a pair of Crocs as part of a response to help and support our community during this time. Just a wonderful, wonderful gesture and act of kindness. So thank you, thank you to Crocs. And our Coal Creek parents were the ones who also helped set that up, so thank you, Randy. And then finally, two other items. Want to recognize, and some of Board members, you may have read about this in the paper, yesterday we received a sizable donation from the Future Arts Foundation. They donated more than 60 instruments for students who lost everything in the fire, keyboards, electric guitars, to violins, to xylophones, and just helped to keep the music going. And as the parent of a musician, I can't tell you how important that is for his livelihood, and so just really, really excited about that. And last, but for certain, not least, last week, January 13 through the 19th, was School Board Recognition Week. Governor Polis issued this proclamation recognizing the week, as well as the great service Board members give to school districts across the state. Board members, I know that you know that I, that how lucky I feel to work with all of you for our community. I think that it's important to really stop and recognize our Board of Education for the amazing leadership they provide to our community, support they provide to our staff, and just the excellent governance they provide to our organization to make sure that we serve the needs of all kids. So thank you once again, Board members, for all you do. And that is the end of my remarks this evening.
Board members, any questions for Dr. Anderson? Okay, thank you. We'll now proceed to the next item on our agenda, which is public participation. Members of the public who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, where we're asked to sign up prior to noon today by submitting the request to speak during public participation form, that can be found on the BVSD website, or by contacting the Board Secretary, Laura Schaefer, public participants will join and present their comments via Zoom. The Board respects the rights of the public to speak on matters concerning the operation of the schools. We believe that public comments that are critical of district staff, however, often cause unnecessary harm to those employees and to the education of our students. As a result, we prefer that members of the public share any criticisms of employees in writing with the superintendent, who is responsible for supervising all staff and then involving the board as necessary. If you choose instead to address a personnel issue publicly, please understand that the Board does not endorse the comments of any speaker, and reminds all who speak that they assume the risk of legal action by district employees in the event the affected employees believe that any comments about them violate legal standards. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the Board confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, which we will not tonight, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. If you run out of time or would like to share additional information, you may email the Board. We all read all of our emails. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks, therefore, should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. I may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. You will see a yellow card when you have 30 seconds remaining. When you have 10 seconds, you will see an orange card. Please wrap up your comments. At the end of your two minutes, a timer will sound, and your microphone will be muted. We have a full lineup of speakers tonight, so we ask that you please self-monitor your time as well. We have no students tonight, so, and I don't believe any of these are on agenda items, so I think we'll just start in the order that I was given the list. Bless you. So the first public participant that I have is Melanie Jordan.
Hello, my name is Melanie Jordan, and I have two children who attend kindergarten and second grade in the district. I did not expect to be asking you to change your policies related to face covering protocols because I've always supported mask wearing and have worked hard to make sure my children have masks that fit well and that they're comfortable wearing them. Two weeks ago, following this board's last meeting, my second grader was sent home from school 20 minutes into the school day. The reason, his mask had fallen below his nose, and his teacher had to remind him to put it above his nose. He complied, and he was sent home along with five other elementary school-aged children that day. He is eight. He needs reminders to brush his teeth and to go to bed for most daily activities. My six and eight-year-old boys move constantly, their masks will fall below their noses at times. I expect that they will need reminders, and I expect them to comply with those reminders. But I do not expect or accept that they should be sent home solely for needing reminders. It's stigmatizing and traumatizing, and it should not happen. This district needs to do more to support schools that are struggling with getting students to wear masks appropriately. I was told there is no occupational therapy or other district-wide assistance in working with children who have difficulty wearing masks. When masks fit poorly rather than the school providing a mask they believe fits better, children are being sent home. I don't know how many schools this is happening at because in response to a CORR request, the district told me it does not track this. The current policy is allowing young children to be sent home without any documentation and without any interventions to keep them in school, young children who already know no normalcy due to this pandemic. Please do not create panic with your words tonight. Please ensure that additional guidance is provided to elementary schools about what they need to offer and do before they send children home for noncompliance with this policy. There are many things this district can do to keep children safe during COVID. Sending children home when they need reminders about wearing masks should not be one of them. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Cynthia Nevison.
Yes, I'll start by saying I'm glad BVSD has ended their quarantine policy for casual classroom exposure to COVID, but I'm concerned that they still selectively quarantine unvaccinated student athletes. Under current policy, when school athletes test positive, their teammates who are unvaccinated need to stay home for five days, while those who are fully vaccinated do not. When this happened to some friends' sons on the Fairview basketball team, I submitted a CORR request for the de-identified counts of players testing positive and their vaccine status. The results indicated that 71%, or five out of seven players who have tested positive this season, were fully vaccinated. These results come at a time when COVID cases are soaring in the most highly vaccinated countries like Israel, and many are recognizing that COVID vaccines do not stop infection and transmission, and thus cannot stop the pandemic. Only natural immunity can. COVID vaccines also come with health risks, especially for young male athletes. About 1 in 2,500 young men and boys will suffer heart inflammation after their second mRNA dose, and the risk likely increases with each booster. A recent study estimated that boys are six times more likely to be hospitalized for myocarditis following COVID vaccination than for the natural infection itself. BVSD's quarantine policy effectively coerces athletes into taking a risky pharmaceutical product with no long-term safety data to fully participate in their sport. The selective quarantining of unvaccinated students is not justified based on the scientific evidence worldwide or Fairview High's own data. BVSD should end this discriminatory policy. Either quarantine all teammates equally, or better, stop quarantining healthy asymptomatic people, period. Kids need sports more than ever after being locked out of school for a year, isolated and masked for nearly two years now. Enough is enough of the damaging.
Thank you. The next speaker is Carolyn Brinsky. Beninsky, sorry, I'm missing your last name, I apologize.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, my name's Carolyn Beninsky, I live in Boulder. I sent the board a couple of emails last night. One had to do with vaccines, the other one had to do with masks, but I'm just going to speak to the vaccine issue. I urge you to reject the injection of children, especially small children, with any experimental COVID vaccines. As the CDC admits, this vaccine does not stop infection or transmission, which actually is the definition of a vaccine, and thus injecting children with these products provides no protection to other children or adults. As of January 23rd, a couple of days ago, 17,000 doctors and medical scientists from around the world had signed a declaration which states that healthy children should not be subject to forced COVID vaccination for several reasons. One, healthy children under 18 have negligible clinical risk from COVID. Number two, long-term safety of recurrent COVID vaccines for children hasn't been studied, it's not known. We don't know what's going to happen to these kids. Number three, as Cynthia mentioned, children risk severe adverse effects from the vaccine, that's already happening. And number four, we need healthy unvaccinated children to achieve the herd immunity that will protect everybody. So I am, the Nuremberg Principles adopted pursuant to Nazi experiments prohibit any coercion and require informed consent for any experimental products. I urge you, no coercion, no mandates, let the parents make up their own minds about
Are you, I don't want to cut you off if you still have time and you have anything else to say. Okay, we'll move on then. Erin McHugh is our next speaker.
My name is Erin McHugh, I'm a mother of three children, one of whom is a middle schooler in the district. She has experienced headaches and anxiety since the beginning of the mask mandate returning to school. She has experienced a vast survey of emotions and experiences that she didn't have prior to COVID, albeit she is in middle school and it is a different experience, but the hardest part is bullying, vandalism, and violence in her school. She personally has been told twice that she should kill herself. She's in sixth grade. I have spoken with one of her teachers and one of the administrators at her school, who said that this year and the past two years, they have seen and experienced the highest amounts of violence and vandalism in their upwards of 30 and 35 years experience. This is all due to the youth losing their ability to empathize because they cannot see each other's faces. There is data to support that the mental health, mental wellness of our children is vastly and deeply impacted by the lack of ability to see one another's faces. It's already hard enough with the presence of social media and with the task at hand, the pressure at school, that we need to support our children, support their hearts, so that they can learn and feel safe at school to learn. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Cobble.
Hi. In 1995, Nelson Mandela said, "There can be no keener revelation of a society's soul than the way in which it treats its children." Your upholding mask mandates for school-aged children and coercion of the experimental medical intervention is completely unjustified. There is no emergency, so your mandates should be expired. They are actually illegal. You are on the wrong side of history. These mandates and policies are crimes against humanity, a violation of our constitutional rights and an affront to our sovereignty. They are failing globally and nationally. It's surprising to me that Boulder County chooses to just keep digging. Is anyone on this board curious why vaccines are being pushed when they have been proven not to work? They are a failed experiment. In fact, I believe that the illnesses we are seeing today are from the vaccinated. Children who have not been vaccinated with any shots are healthier children. This is a fact. Where there is risk, there must be a choice. Mandates to wear a mask or take a medical intervention are a violation of federal law. We have a right to refuse. How much money have you accepted to keep our kids masked, encouraging injections while denying natural immunity? How many of you know the real truth about how few children are impacted by COVID? And how many of you know about the increase in suicides, the loss of IQ, the overall demoralizing and dehumanizing effect on a child when they can't see someone's face? Are you just following orders? We are being torn apart as a society. We need to unite with the intent to do no harm, to help our children live, thrive, and evolve. Will you take a stand and protect the children you were elected to serve? Could there be another way?
Thank you. The next speaker is, what's the first name on this, Laura? Daniel Blackburn, is that right? Dario, that's, I couldn't tell. Dario Blackburn, please.
Dario.
Thank you, sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yep, Dario. Sorry, I missed your first name, so I apologize.
That's okay, that's okay. So I would just like to say that yesterday, I listened to Dr. Peter McCullough, who is a heart specialist, a cardiologist, and a specialist, testify before Senate Committee hearing, and saying that there are now over 21,000 cases of myocarditis among young people, and that there are people, these are people that are not at risk of dying of COVID, and yet they are at grave risk of developing myocarditis when they take the vaccine. MRIs of the people who have developed myocarditis show that 100% of them have heart injuries. There are unprecedented numbers of heart failure in young athletes across the world who have been vaccinated and are suffering from myocarditis. Dr. McCullough and Dr. Malone, who is the originator of the mRNA technology, have said that under no circumstances should a young person take this vaccine, be coerced into taking this vaccine, or mandated into taking this vaccine. And so I just want to know, where does this testimony from these specialists, doctors at the Senate hearing yesterday, leave your agency, leave your Boulder County District? Will you continue to push the vaccines on nine-to-11-year-old children who have a 99% rate of surviving COVID, and even those who are 40 and younger also have a rate of 95%, greater than 95%? Will you continue to push this vaccination of young children?
Dario, are you done? I don't want to cut you off. Okay. Next, we have Chris Nelson, who was given two minutes, from Shannon Weissblatt. Is that right, Laura? Okay.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, thanks.
Great, thanks. First and foremost, I send my thoughts to all of those affected by the Marshall Fire. I have two high schoolers in BVSD. While it has been a year since I last spoke at a board meeting, my advocacy for normal feet for all students has not wavered. The time has come for Dr. Anderson and this board to give our students normal feet for the remainder of this school year. As Boulder County Public Health continues to misrepresent and omit data to fit their narrative, emotionally manipulate their residents with irrational fear, and refuse to accept responsibility for their actions, students continue to bear an unthinkable burden. Kids desperately need normal life back. Yesterday, 14 physicians and scientists, including pediatricians, infectious disease doctors, and actual public health experts, released an advocacy toolkit. You can download this kit at www.urgencyofnormal.com. It accurately summarizes the data on vaccines, masks, Omicron, and mental health to advocate for kids as whole people. A few excerpts: "High-quality, one-way masking protects the wearer regardless of what others around that person do." "The focus needs to be changed to support students' mental, emotional, and social health and avoid escalating mask rules or other COVID policies. More restrictive policies increase fear and falsely convey that schools are unsafe. Masking in schools should be voluntary, not mandatory. To think that two years of masking has had no social impact, has had no impact on socialization, learning, and anxiety is short-sighted. Despite false claims by the CDC, well-controlled, real-world studies have not demonstrated any clear benefit of masking students. In scientific terms, no mask study has been statistically significant. Academic studies confirm the results of government studies. In one study, there were no correlations with mask mandates, and in another study, there were no significant associations between COVID-19 incidents and face mask use. Student masking has no scientifically established benefit in real-world use. When an intervention's real-world benefits are too small to measure, we should feel comfortable ending its use. Potential harms from long-term masking are poorly understood, and actually, reports on mask removal have noted social and emotional benefits for students. A very small subset of children have medical conditions that need to be acknowledged. These families should follow the guidance of their medical team to reduce risk, not a school district, just as they do for any other respiratory virus or illness. Focused protection for these children can offer better protection than universal masking, which, again, has little to no efficacy in well-controlled, real-world studies. This expert group recommends ending mandatory masking no later than February 15th. And of course, anyone who wants or needs to continue using a mask is welcome to do so. Boulder County's indoor mask mandates, PHO 2021-07 and 08, have done absolutely nothing to slow community spread. Unlike neighboring public health departments, Boulder's PHOs do not even have expiration dates, nor have they been updated for three months. The metrics set forth are unattainable, especially when the metrics are based on irrelevant case counts. Numerous area districts do not have or will be ending their mandates in early February. Superintendent Kudowski of Adams 12 is counting down the days and estimating mid-February to end their mandates, per their board meeting last week. While you will likely never admit this district has been and continues to be on the wrong side of history with regards to your masking, my kids and I will accept this omission when you at least acknowledge that it is time to do better for the sake of every BVSD student. Unmask them now. Thank you."
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rafe First.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, I'm the father of three young boys, two of whom are BVSD students, and the third will be soon. I want to bring up the issue of mask mandates in school and as we transition from pandemic to endemic. But rather than advocate for my particular position, I would instead like to propose that the Board create or support the creation of a safe space for the teachers, administrators, and parents to authentically share their feelings and viewpoints. In the current political environment, this sort of safe space, where everyone feels heard and can truly listen to one another, and where the facts and science can be debated collaboratively and openly, this sort of space doesn't exist, and it won't unless it is our intention to create it. Part of our shared educational mission is to model for the Part of our shared educational mission is to model for the kids how civil discourse works in a civil society, and how we can come together and work together even when we disagree, and sometimes very strongly disagree. There's a lot of fear still around all things COVID, and given the politicization of the science, it's so hard to collectively make sense of what the truth really is about masks. As various countries and jurisdictions within the United States are starting to push the decision of mask mandates to the local level, we will soon have the challenge and the opportunity to decide for ourselves as a community what is in the best interest of our students and educators alike. I am eager to work with anyone and everyone in the BVSD community who wants to come together and have the very difficult discussion of when to end the mask mandates. I feel we owe it to our children to rise to this challenge and model how adults solve a collective challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sean Burke. Sean's not online. We'll come back then and see if, at the end, if he comes back on, or she comes back online. Next speaker is Christina Eisenstein. Hi.
Okay, you can hear me. Well, it's a difficult audience to follow. Everyone was so poignant in all of their notes. I would echo the words of Karen Cobble and Chris Nelson, and I just want to speak to some of the things that I'm hearing my own children say. I have three boys in elementary school at BVSD. My oldest is a fourth grader, and he says to me, "Mom, I don't enjoy school anymore. I used to love school, but now on the playground, I'm shouted 'social distancing' when I try to play basketball. I get suffocated from sitting in a mask all day." Today, they only had a mask break during lunch because there was no outdoor recess. And it's really difficult to see as a parent. And now, when we're seeing this data that shows the effectiveness of cloth masks are pretty minimal, if not nonexistent, I really believe, as Chris Nelson pointed, it's time to do the one-way masking, where it's parent choice, and those kids with health issues can wear N95. My middle son has an anxiety disorder called selective mutism. It means that when he gets nervous, he doesn't talk. And I've done so much work with him and gone to specific therapy programs in Michigan, and he was making such headway, and then COVID hit. And the mask for him creates so much anxiety, and they've changed his verbal abilities in school, and they're affecting him on an academic level. So I would just ask the board to be mindful that there are other consequences. There's heightened anxiety, obviously, there's depression, but there's things that you haven't even considered, and so please have the kids in mind.
Thank you.
I'm finished.
Okay, thank you. It's just hard to tell if you're just pausing or if you're finished, so thanks for saying that. Our next speaker is Heather Muller.
I have two boys, one at Ginnie Hill and one at Casey Middle. They're both actually really happy in school, and our experience is overall good. I really want to support what almost everybody here has said tonight. A lot of what I was going to say has been said, so I'm not going to repeat it, but there's been a lot of great information and data shared here, and I really hope that maybe tonight, you as the board, can hear this stuff or be willing to do some research and hear that what we're saying is true. Other than that, I don't have a ton of new stuff to say. I do send emails periodically. It's really just some of the same comments and questions that I've spoken before that don't really ever seem to get addressed. I have my same concerns about masks and the continued masking of our children in school. I echo what all the other folks have said tonight. I want to just add that there's been a lot of talk about not allowing bullying around masks, but it seems to only go one way. We're not allowed to bully, quote-unquote, "those who want to wear masks," but for those who don't want to wear them, nothing is done. Both of my boys have experienced children picking on them around whether or not they choose to wear their mask, and I'm talking about outside. They're following the rules inside, but the kids pick on them, and nothing is ever really done about it. All we keep hearing about is how we're not going to bully kids who want to wear masks. So, I really, I feel like that's an issue. Why are we still doing Zoom meetings when there's no emergency? We keep hearing when the cases go down, but they've been up, they've been down. We've been told at this point that we need to learn to live with COVID. It's a 99% chance of survival. Really, there's no reason to hide from each other anymore. Like, please, let's get back to in-person meetings. And I'll cut it off. I have other things to say, but I think everyone that's shared has already said most of it. And I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ryan Scott. Erin Meshke.
My name is Erin Meshke, and I have four children. My oldest two graduated from BVSD in 2020 from Boulder High and 2021 from Boulder Universal. Currently, my younger two are not in BVSD school buildings because I strongly oppose mask mandates and vaccine pressure. My third is a junior in Boulder Universal, but I completely withdrew the enrollment of my youngest two as a freshman. It is time for the Boulder Valley School District School Board to stop passing the buck of responsibility and remove the mask mandate for all students and staff. As an individual board member, you did not take an oath to the Boulder County Public Health. You did not take an oath to CDPE. You did not take an oath to the CDC, the NIH, or the WHO. You took an oath to the community. BVSD policy BA states, and I quote, "The board is responsible to the community and therefore should attempt to take into account the opinion of the community and reconcile competing values. School board members must look to the future as the results of many decisions and actions of the board will not be realized at once, but they will set the course of education for years to come," end quote. Those of us with a competing value, like not agreeing with your mask policy, do not feel like the board has done its job to take into account the opinion of the community and reconcile competing values. We have largely been ignored, dismissed, and kept at bay with school board meetings on Zoom, while children in our district are subjected to measures that have never been tested in the way that has become standard practice. It remains true that full-time masking of our students and community is actually an emergency use authorization practice and thusly should not be mandated. We have no idea of the long-term damage to physical and mental health or the intellectual impact of this type of masking. This is all a grand experiment done at the risk of our children. The psychological problem can widely be seen in the over-50% rise in suicide among our teenagers and huge increase in reports of mental health issues. The intelligence impacts are being studied as well, with Brown University showing a decrease in 22% in IQ, which is an over-20-point IQ point reduction in children. This decrease in intelligence is largely attributed to masking, and I believe it is, as quoted from the aforementioned policy, "one impact setting the course of education for years to come." The goal of education and education policy has never been to trend downward. We must reverse this policy for the sake of our children. The very nature of science is that scientists are continually finding new things and refining old things. It has to be this way, or it is not science. Dr. Fauci, who has claimed to be the physical embodiment of the science, gave one of his few honest statements about masking in the very beginning, when he told everyone that based on over 62 pre-pandemic studies, masks don't help and no one should run out to get them. Those previous findings should not be ignored merely to pressure more and more people to take an experimental shot that is also not working. Countries around the world, and even places around the United States, that are honestly reporting their COVID numbers, show that depending on the region, 75% to 95% of their hospitalized COVID patients are fully vaccinated, with many being boosted. The current science also shows that cities with mask mandates and high vaccination rates actually have the highest rates of COVID. Deaths in the 18- to 64-age group are up a startling and unexplainable 40%, and over half of those deaths cannot be attributed to COVID in any way. Why would the incredibly intelligent people of Boulder continue to espouse these failing methods? Why are our elected officials, and I will remind you that you are elected, saying that we need to do more vaccination and more masking when both are causing problems? In a place that prides itself on diversity and individuality, why are we teaching our children that compliance is the only way and showing them that dissension will be punished? How can our children live civically engaged lives if they aren't allowed to disagree with authority or the chosen narrative? These policies must be reversed. Masking must become completely voluntary. Vaccination clinics should be removed from school grounds immediately. It is your job to protect our children, and we will hold you accountable. Is that my full form?
Thank you. The next speaker is Mark Leslie.
Yes, thank you. Wow, an amazing group of speakers to follow, but information like Cindy, Karen, Chris, Christina, Heather, Erin, an intelligent board would listen to these folks and the data. But that doesn't seem like you. You know, we're two years into this pandemic, and these meetings are still being held by Zoom. It clearly demonstrates the board is afraid of face-to-face debate with parents when important decisions affecting their kids, and it's not due to a virus. Now, this ridiculous "trust the science" narrative is crumbling. Case in point, Fauci caught lying to Congress under oath multiple times. Fauci has clear financial ties to the drug manufacturers who want to hide their data for 75 years. Fauci's wife works for a company that approves the drugs at the FDA. This White House administration vaccine mandates continue to crumble when challenged in court. We're fighting billions flowing into Colorado from ARP, ESHR, as well as other avenues alike. She's for change, receiving $1.6 million from the Gates Foundation on 6/20/21. Parents are following this funding, incentivizing, enforcing one-size-fits-all health protocols on our kids to receive these funds. You clearly are hiding financially incentivized and unethical practices that are immoral behind your perceived power and authority. You've heard it time and again from parents tonight, and my message to this board is clear. You work for us. You were elected by the taxpayers of this school district to represent the best interests of the students and the parents. Relying on just following orders will not prevent you from being liable and held responsible from harm to our children. Parents are united in discovering the financial incentives to this school district for masking and using experimental mRNA treatments on our kids. We understand the bonds that are required to hold puzzles to office as well.
Did Sean Burke come back on? No? And how about Ryan Scott? Thank you. That concludes our public comment. We'll now move on to the next item on our agenda, which is board communication. Board members, who would like to begin? Lisa?
Yeah, I don't have much to say. I just want to thank Boulder County Public Health and BVSD again for making sure that we are doing everything we can to slow the spread of this pandemic with our multi-layered approach.
Yes, I just have a couple of things. I would like to get some follow-up from staff about kids being sent home because their mask is below their nose. That doesn't sound very reasonable to me. Also, just to point out that Boulder County Public Health orders have the force of law. We are required to follow them. And for those of you who have told us many times that we are committing crimes against humanity, I would encourage you to contact the International Criminal Court in The Hague. They are the ones who deal with crimes against humanity.
I just have a few comments. Hold on, I have to pull it up. I know it's a little dated, but we celebrated Martin Luther King's birthday last week, and for those of us who have read much about Martin Luther King, his letters from the Birmingham Jail require us to recognize that when we're in times where our democracy is at risk, and I happen to believe that it's at risk, that we all need to step forward. And so, I know that this board supports that, and I know our community does too, and I think it's a really helpful time to just remember Martin Luther King and all he stood for, and we still have a long way to go to fulfill his promise. So, thank you for those of you who are celebrating that, and I look forward to our continued march towards that arc of justice. This last week, I had the opportunity to attend the National School Boards Association Equity and Advocacy Conference. I'll be brief. The advocacy conference focused on a few things primarily NSBA has been advocating for many years for full funding of IDEA, and there is a bill currently in Congress with about 40 different sponsors called the Full Funding of IDEA. Unfortunately, I think it'd take 10 years to get to the 40% full funding. Our two senators from Colorado have not yet signed on as cosponsors, so to the extent that we can advocate that, I think, I don't know that they're against it. I just think maybe they haven't signed on, but maybe they could use a little encouragement. So, I think that's one of our main priorities at the federal level, and we've also focused on the Homework App and some of the other priorities that NSBA has been focusing on. So, I look forward to continuing to have these conversations with our congressional delegation, and that's it for my board comment. Our only information item tonight is our legislative update, and I don't have anything. Does board members have anything? Moving on. We'll move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda reads as follows. We have 7.1 Personnel Item, 7.2 Approval of Minutes, January 11, 2022, 7.3 Grant Health Services School Nurse Workforce Grant, Colorado Department of Education, 2022, 7.4 Grant Student Services, ARC-HCY Formula Grant, CDE 2022. Are there any items board members would like to pull from the consent grouping? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Nicole, and seconded by Kitty. Laura, could you please call the rule?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Niznick?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll now move on to our action items. I believe we have the revised budget. Bill, do you have anything that we need to present on the revised budget? We had this presented to us two weeks ago, and so we've had the budget in front of us. I'm assuming if there are any questions, Bill would be available to answer them. Does anybody have any questions about our revised budget? If not, do we have a motion to approve the revised budget? Kitty? Seconded by Stacy. Laura, could you call the rule?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Niznick?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes. Our final action item is the 2022 BVSD Legislative Platform. We've all had a chance to review and revise it. Do we have any changes to it? And as I've said repeatedly, as we go forward, we can always change this as we discover new priorities and new issues brought forward by the legislature and brought forward by our lobbyists and by our staff. So, are there any revisions or any comments or questions about the legislative platform? Hearing none or seeing none, is there a motion to approve it? Kitty, seconded by Beth. Can you call the rule, please?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Niznick?
Yes.
Raj Paul?
Yes.
Sargent?
Yes.
Sweeney Moran?
Yes.
Zess?
Yes.
Motion passes. So, our only next item is agenda setting. I will note that we have a prioritization meeting coming up on Monday where we can address some of these issues, but do board members have anything they'd like to address right now as concerns agenda setting? Lisa?
I just thought maybe we'd take a minute to make sure that folks know that our prioritization meeting is, that for maybe people who haven't paid attention before, I think it's an exciting thing to come watch. We'll be talking about all the priorities that we will be examining for the next few years. years in the school district. I know some folks who enjoy watching us here are also fans of city council. You can see Heather Bergman again for folks who just finished watching the city council retreat, so just an encouragement to watch that meeting. I believe it's February 9th.
7th.
Oh, February 7th, sorry, a week from Monday. Thank you.
A week from yesterday. Two weeks from yesterday, sorry. Thank you. We'll get it right. We got the right date.
February 7th.
Starting at 5:00.
5:00 PM, it's a Monday night.
I got the time right. Anything else around agenda setting, board members? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Kitty, seconded by Richard? We will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.